...the Board of Education in order, please rise with the plegiatants. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? I move we approve the agenda with the following amendment. Additional certified and classified personnel actions of the Federation are to be re-. There's a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tim. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Opposing side? Motion carries. Mr. Bernal? And Mr. Singh, who's going to start us off with some wonderful news?
Yes. I'm Roger Singh. I'm the Associate Principal for the Academy of Arts and Communications at Garden City High School. And it is my pleasure to introduce Chuy Bernal, an award-winning, literally, award-winning teacher. He won the Crystal Apple this year. And he's going to talk to us a little bit about his program, and he has a few of our wonderful students with him. So, Mr. Bernal.
Jasmine, come on up. These are the wonderful students who won the, our awards for the Kansas Association of Broadcast Awards. Last year, we came here and we said, you know, we achieved an achievement that had never been done before. We won forty-two state awards, and that's, that's a hu- that's a lot of awards. I mean, that was more than every other school combined back then. Well, more people entered this year, and we won more awards. This year, we won fifty-one state awards, again, more than every other high school combined. And with that, we won eighteen state championships. And I just want, these are all the state championships that the kids had won. Showed them off. We have many more of these back at the ranch, back home. And I just kind of want to recognize the people who did win awards. Over here, Jasmine, what'd you win? Oh, you won a state runner-up in sports, right? Sports radio runner-up. Haley won several awards. Do you remember all of your awards that you won?
Um, let's see. Sixty-second PSA, station promotion, hard news package, and other news.
You really cleaned up, yeah. Joshua, you won an award, right? For runner-up for state thirty-second PSA?
Thirty-second PSA, hard news package. Uh, what else was there?
And Kaylee didn't win an award, but she put her heart and effort into a story that ran, it's still on twenty-one today, on channel twenty-one. It's the seven period day. She did a, what's called a enterprise news story, which is investigating a problem or an issue, and then she did it, and she did a fantastic job. If you ever have a chance to watch on twenty-one, it's still running. I encourage you to check it out. Cooper Livermore, he's a senior, and you won a state entertainment program for the second consecutive year.
Yep.
Also won state sports, or sports category?
Sportscast for third year in a row.
Third year in a row. Well, that's an award we've won, I think.
Every year.
Eleven years in a row.
And then live newscast.
And Zach Carlin, what'd you win?
Uh, sports play-by-play and radio and television got runner-up.
Yeah? Juan, what'd you win?
A lot.
A lot.
The one in my hand right now is for sports play-by-play for the radio. So, that's cool. First year on radio, and I won.
And Jasmine Jimenez, you won a state runner-up, right?
Yeah, in research paper.
So, there's a lot of facets that are in the broadcast profession. There's writing, there's filming, there's editing, there's recording. And they've done an excellent job. They've learned all this in the past few years. And my group of seniors here, Josh, Cooper, Juan, they're gonna be sorely missed. I mean, we're losing a lot of talent this next year, but I always like to say, we don't rebuild, we reload. Because we have such talent in, in Garden City High School. It's great that we can just recruit these kids and bring them into the program and have them achieve these successes. So, do you have any questions?
No logs, just a piece.
And again, we, we have the benefit of having the new radio station. You are, you're all aware, it's all tuned in, your radios at, in your cars, one oh point seven. Having that's been a big boon for us, because we, we're producing stuff that's actually going on our air. It sounds like we're producing stuff that never gets shown or aired ever. Because everything they make ends up on air.
I think I talked to Dr. Carlin about making sure it was pre-programmed on all of the stations, or all of the district cards.
Does that happen?
The time I get in one, I change them all to one oh one.
I have a question. This is also something that's broadcast within the school. Is that correct?
Yeah, we do a daily newscast every day. And that broadcasts just within our, we make a DVD every day, and it plays for our students our, our daily news. But that news also ends up on twenty-one daily. So, if you watch long enough, you'll see the daily news that we put on there.
But this is, but this is another way that we can make the whole student body aware of various things that are coming up, or news items, or district updates.
Yeah, we also do district updates every few weeks. Leanne Rogers is currently airing on there. I don't know, there you are, Leanne. Oh, yeah, she's on there every hour and a half or so. Talking to Roy Sessin about, I think you're talking about kindergarten readiness, so, yeah. There's lots of information that's out, available to the community and available within the student body as well.
Great job. Thank you so much for coming.
So.
Great job. Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yep.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernal, what size font is this?
That size eight font.
So, it's eight font to get this all onto one page?
Yeah.
All of the winners. Okay. And then if I could, before Mr. Singh leaves too, he's still there. I just wanted to mention, it's nice to have an award-winning former teacher introducing another award-winning teacher. Mr. Singh is also a former Crystal Apple winner.
It's just coincidence.
Excellence breeds excellence.
Yes.
There you have it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for all that you do for our students.
Thank you.
It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Should I bring in Ms. LaBarbara? Are you going to?
I'm ready.
Renee? It's my privilege tonight to introduce Mrs. LaBarbara, the principal at Kenneth Henderson Middle School. But look at the crowd here tonight, and what a tribute to the support that she has and what's grown, and, and her helping Mr. Byer, the Associate Principal, make great strides this year. So, I'll let Mrs. LaBarbara give an update on the award that she and her staff has earned.
Well, I, I didn't earn this award. Kenneth Henderson Middle School earned this award, and so I want the rest of them to come up here with me, please.
you have to submit an application for. We submitted three different applications, and we were informed last week that we won three different awards. We won the award for high-performing middle school. Our secretary, Cherry Harmon, won the recognition for Administrative Assistant for the Year. And Kenneth Henderson Middle School was chosen Middle School of the Year. And I will add that the application part is three parts. We had to give a synopsis of the school, and then we had to add a section on how we are showing growth with our students. And you should all have an application that we submitted. And then new programs or updated programs that we're looking at and constantly trying to come up with ways to help our students be more successful. I will, you, this was a team effort. Everything you see in there, somebody said, hey, why don't we include this? And we were limited to four pages, so we had to do a lot of cut and paste and checking our words. And Lindley was our wordsmith here. She put it all together in the format. But everybody here had some part of it. Counselors submitted the part about their counseling groups. I, I know the social studies, I see Megan there, and the social studies, you know, got together and said, hey, we do this. And, you know, the elective teachers got together and said, hey, well, don't forget this. And it really was a, a team project. So, that's why I think, you know, we need to recognize everybody here. So, and I will say, it wasn't, it's been a multiple-year progress. Last year, we got, we're runner-up for this award. So, I want to say Charlie Stillion was a part of this process, as is Matt Byer this year. So, they both had similar roles and have helped get there. Any questions, or anything? Anybody?
I just want to throw out that it was great leadership that helped us get to this award. Linda came in, what's it been, five years now? Stepped in, filled the shoes, and has been a great leader. And she'll be sorely missed when she retires at the end of this year, so, thanks, Linda.
Linda Walker, ready?
She thinks she's very talented.
Well, thank you all so much, and I would appreciate if you guys would walk through and shake your hands, too, because this was a tremendous award. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Get in line, Jason. Up here.
I'm good. You want to get your hands, oh, go. Yeah.
So, Glenda, that's what it'll be Monday, is for them?
Yeah.
Make sure you have a grad email.
This Friday, we go to Topeka, and we pick up the actual, we get a big banner, and we make it to school, and then we're gonna go back and send it to the staff.
Have Roy email us this week if we cancel, you can plan ahead. That's awesome. Because last year, I reported when you guys were runner-up, right? So, I knew you were trying for this.
Hey, thanks for coming, RJ.
You're welcome.
Mommy and Dad, too.
Good job.
Jenny Wilson Elementary School. I'm proud of you.
Thank you. Better payment, yes. All right, first of all, we want to thank you for allowing us to come and see you to present some things that have been going on at Jenny Wilson Elementary School. I'm Linda Stewart, I'm the principal. And we've had a movie theme this year. We like to do themes, it seems to get the kids real involved, and, and we get a sense of community and pride with our, our shirts, and you know, we're kind of all about community in our school. So, one thing that I'm really proud about Jane Wilson, and I want to thank everybody, is what the community does for us. We have earned Kiwanis Grants, the foundation, we have earned those grants. We want to thank Freddy's, and Papa John's, McDonald's, I made a list because I didn't want to forget anyone. First National Bank, they've done wonderful for us with our student bank. Staples, they've supported us. And our community leaders, the heroes, they've been coming to our school quite a bit. The police, the fire department, the EMS, and the sheriff's department. And it's not because of the laws. It's not due to.
Hi, I'm Barb Goldie, I'm the Nutrition Secretary. And we want to thank our parents, our wonderful parents of volunteering, and our PTO, the Site Council, Laura Guy from the Garden City Community College, she's not here, she's there. Bonnie Jiggett was unable to attend. And Tina Davis, will you please stand?
One of our Site Council members. Tina, thank you.
I'm Amy Galley, I'm a first grade teacher and a first-year teacher. This year, we implemented CHAMPs in our school. We did a book study last in the fall, and so we have now implemented in the hallways, in the cafeteria, in all of our classrooms. And CHAMPs stands for C for Conversation, H for Help, A for Activity, M for Movement, P for Participation, and S for Success.
And I'm Megan Ford, and I'm a first-grade teacher also. And this year, we implemented a reading incentive program, and actually, we did it, we implemented it last year, but we started it earlier in the year this year. And so, our students have these reading cards, and every time they read a book at home outside of school, we give them a little check mark on their, their reading card. And then they earn, every time they fill up a card, they earn some type of reading token, or bracelet, or T-shirt, something really cool. So, this has really motivated our students to want to read outside of school.
Our staff belongs to the Relate to Life team. We've raised six thousand dollars this year. We've been members for about twelve years, so as close as we can figure, we've raised between fifty and sixty thousand dollars over the years for Relate to Life. And you are. And I am. Allison. Al.
I'm Ali Conroy, nineteen, second grade. Another thing we do for fitness is we have a walk program, a walk run program that is initiated by our nurse that we start in January. And the students either walk or run around the playground, and for every five miles, they earn a token. So, we have a foot token, and then the more that they get, the bigger the prizes. There's a T-shirt, there's a Bigfoot, so they really keep the kids motivated to just be active.
All right, let's go get them. Right. We need to give out our, the second round.
We will explain this next.
And I'm Sharon Nelson, and I teach third grade. And I'm going to talk to you about our cougar paw program. When students do an act, have an acting kindness that we acknowledge, they earn a little cougar paw like this. They can be setting a good example, following directions, just doing something out of the ordinary, they earn this cougar paw. And then, at the end of the week, we choose the golden cougar paw person in our classroom. We send all of these down to the office, and at the end of the day on Friday, students' names are drawn out to win a little prize, and they get to take all of these home with the reason why they got to earn this. And it's just another way to show parents how rewarding good behavior and being a good student.
And I'm Kara Dearden, and I teach third grade. We also do sunshine notes. Just, this could go from students to students, students to teachers, teachers to students. Sometimes students even like to send them home. It's a good way to motivate them if they're down, or if they're really proud of something, giving this them, to them, just makes them feel good inside, helps, gives them something to hang on to.
And sometimes schools, the school boards, the schools, and administrations, you'll depress. You have one on your table.
And we did have all the parents fill out one of these to their children when they came for conferences this last nine weeks. And students, when they came to school, and then they were just ecstatic about their notes from their parents. And some of them still have them in their desks, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Kim Curran, I teach fourth grade reading and writing. And just a side note, my son won one of those broadcasting awards, state championship. I'm here to talk about the bank. The fourth grade is in charge of the bank. They have to apply for the job that they want, and then Miss Ashlock and I look at them and see who we will hire. We do two rounds, so we have two groups of kids, and we've had a really good, this year, more kids have opened accounts. And I encourage the fourth grade to do it, especially if they're gonna work for the bank, you should open an account and start depositing. So, they've learned a lot. They do the cash queue, where kids get picked to go in and grab as much cash as they can in thirty seconds, or whatever it is. So, they really enjoy that, and they work hard.
I'm Bonnie Ashlock, and I teach math and social studies. Student council is something that we try to get our fourth graders involved in. We actually have a member out there in the audience, Calista. And they're very involved, they have that at conferences. We raise money, this, this is the fourth year that we have done Pene's for Patients, which is to raise money for leukemia and lymphoma. This year, we raised fourteen hundred dollars, which is almost double what we did last year. So, they did a really good job helping me with that. And then, something that we've been trying to do this year is to reach out to Garden Valley Retirement Home. We've sent cards over a couple of different times, and we're in the middle of making May baskets, a hundred and ten of them. So, we're gonna try to deliver those tomorrow after school, so.
All right.
Hi, I'm Becky Brant, and I'm the librarian. And at Jenny Wilson, we have weekly tech classes where the students come in and use iPads to do a variety of different projects. A lot of times, we try to tie it in with the writing program or science. I have a few projects to show you here. There's some Mother's Day projects, some writing projects. And we use a variety of different apps, and the kids love it, and the staff love the iPads. And a lot of times, the kids end up teaching me something about the app. So, have a look at these projects and passing.
And I'm Kathy Bull, I'm the system operator. I worked with Becky on the tech base. We also use the iPads to issue for state assessments, and they were great. So, we'd love to have another card.
Just want to get that plug in. Thank you.
Plug in, hold on.
And I'm Linda Arz, I teach music at Jenny Wilson. One thing I love about Jenny Wilson is we have an annual food drive for the Maya's House. So, that's awesome. And also, really appreciate our great principal. She can't even say that. Raise.
I'm Kayla Drake, and I'm the specialized teacher at Jenny Wilson. And I just love how active Jenny Wilson is as a school, and how we encourage our students to be more active by modeling being active. So, we participated in national walker ride your bike to school this year, so.
Hi, I'm Ashley Jordan, I teach kindergarten at Jenny Wilson. Something that I really love about our school is the way that our students can come together to support a cause. We have a kindergarten student at our school who has type one diabetes, and her parents asked if they could sell bracelets at our school to help raise money to find a cure. And our students actually came together and helped them raise four hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, that was really awesome.
I'm Danny Chamberlain, I'm a PE teacher at Jenny Wilson. For the past several years, we've been involved with the NFL Play Sixty initiative to promote at least sixty minutes a day of physical fitness. So, every year in the fall, we have like a Play Sixty Day, is what we call it, in the afternoon. Kids dress up and favorite NFL or college football teams. They go around doing a lot of different activities, learning not just football, but just promoting movement. And it's one of the most popular days of the year, I think. It's, it's just a lot of fun.
I'm Dwayne Schlappi, I teach science. And in addition to doing our Play Sixty game days, that in the classroom, the teachers use a program called Go Move. And it's just gets the kids up for brain breaks, and they get to move and dance a little bit, and then they sit back down, or else it, during recess, indoor recess, sometimes. We try to keep them active, and they use it at that time, too.
I'm Melanie Root, I do speech and language services for Florence Wilson, but Annie Ushar, but the best at Jenny Wilson. You guys get that? And Jenny Wilson is, is doing well with trying to give back to the community. The Jenny Wilson staff supports and hosts a Heroes Breakfast, where they invite the firefighters, law enforcement, and any medical personnel, emergency technicians. And they invite the, the guys and gals to come over for breakfast, and the kids and the parents also come and enjoy breakfast with the, with the whole community. And that's just one way that the kids are excited to learn what who's in the community helping them, and develop relationships, and show pride for their school. All right. Not only are the kids my pride and joy, but these staff members right back here are, are hugely my pride and joy. I think about them all the time. They give of themselves one hundred and ten percent. So, there you go, the staff of Jenny Wilson. Thanks, you guys. Okay. Grab your popcorn, grab your candy, it's movie time. Whoa, whoa, we don't want that one. Okay, I guess you can see, all right. This is just gonna show you some of the activities that they talked about just in action. So, here we go.
And they invite the guys and gals to come over for breakfast. And the kids and the parents also come and enjoy breakfast with the whole community. And that's just one way that the kids are excited to learn who's in the community helping them and develop relationships and show pride for their school.
All right. Normally, are the kids my pride and joy, but these staff members right back here are hugely my pride and joy. I think about them all the time. They give of themselves 110%. So there you go, the staff of Jenny Wilson Elementary. Thank you guys. Okay. Grab your popcorn, grab your candy, it's movie time. Whoa, whoa, we don't want that one. Okay, I guess you can see, all right. This is just going to show you some of the activities that they talked about in action. So here we go. Again, thank you all for what you do for our schools and for our kids. We really appreciate it. Thanks for letting us come in tonight.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for my staff or for myself?
You know, I noticed you make use of every square foot of that school. There are kids under the table.
There was even one table turned over and he was inside it.
Now, is that just giving them a place to read?
We had, that was, a lot of the reading ones were from our Read Across America Week. And so we had a big promotion on reading. And so we had several pictures from that where they... And they were excited about it. Thank you.
They made tents. They brought everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, they brought a blanket and a pillow for a fall.
That was great.
Yeah.
I think they were very engaged in reading.
Yes.
Getting to do this and then also having the opportunity to attend a faculty meeting, it just looks like you all have a lot of fun and create learning spaces for the kids. And that's, to me, a really important part of not only school, but just allowing our kids to be kids, too. I know sometimes we think we over test them, we over, you know, but it looks like you guys are trying to give them plenty of opportunity to have fun, too.
You can do it all. You really can. You can give them the academics, but you can give them the culture and a fun place to learn. That's what gets them there. And then while they're there, you just give them all you can. But thank you.
You did a great job. And a holistic kind of approach. I love these things. It's so great to just boost their little egos. And mine, too.
All right. Thank you all. Bye-bye.